Regular city council meeting here in Richfield. Appreciate it, we have kind of a packed house here with some guests here. I'll call this meeting to order and I'd like everybody to please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This time I'd ask the council's approval of the minutes of the Special Concurrent City Council HRA and Planning Commission Work Session of February 9th, 2016, the regular city council meeting of February 9th, 2016, and the special city council work session of February 11th, 2016.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We have presentations, Councilmember Fitz Henry.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, this is always the fun one. I'm gonna call up Chief Henthorn so he can do the presentation for Officer of the Year for 2015 for the Richfield Police Department.
Thank you, Councilmember Fitz Henry, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. It gives me a distinct pleasure and honor to be in front of you today to present our annual Officer of the Year. At the end of each year, the Richfield Sergeants select a police officer for Officer of the Year. The selection is based on the officer's exemplary performance throughout the previous year and the Sergeant's belief that the selected officer demonstrated extraordinary dedication to duty and performance. The Sergeant's decision was based on four evaluation criterias: leadership, dedication, traffic enforcement, and contributions to the community. This officer excelled in all these areas. In leadership, he demonstrated loyalty, honesty, and integrity. He was an informal leader. He demonstrated the ability to think and act creatively in difficult situations. He was a role model and a motivator within our department. His dedication to the department. He is dedicated to this department and the community in which he serves. He participated in his department-sponsored events and community activities. He's a field training officer, he became a firearms instructor, and has been active with range and assisting with other officers' training issues that occur on the range. In traffic enforcement, his efforts in traffic enforcement have been outstanding. In 2015, he made 766 traffic stops, which is an average of six stops per shift, which is very high. He responded to 1,021 primary calls of service resulting in over 200 police reports for our department. His contributions to the community, he understands our department's commitment, the community, and his individual responsibilities. Throughout the year, he volunteered his time in assisted in Citizen Police Academy, PMAC, Pennfest, K-9 demonstrations, and other activities that we are requested to do within the city on a day-to-day basis. So I congratulate him on his performance on behalf of his supervisors, the command staff, and I as the Chief of Police. It gives me great pleasure to present Officer Dave Mast with the Officer of the Year Award. We also put his name on a plaque which hangs in our police department, so anybody who comes in to the police department can see what the Officer of the Years are and what year they were given the award. In attendance tonight is Dave's parents, Mike and Donna. They're also here tonight, so we appreciate that. Dave does an outstanding job for us. He is a two-time winner of this award. You recall, he won last year, so I think we're gonna get some t-shirts made up that say back-to-back winner. But he does a great job for our department and we look forward to giving this award every year.
Thanks.
I also want to thank the command staff for being here. We got the entire command staff, we got the police explorers in the back room, and a lot of officers. I want to thank you for showing up for the meeting, too.
I would be remiss if I didn't introduce one of our newest promoted members within our police department. Sergeant Mark Shelley, who's been with the department for over 23 years, was recently promoted to Lieutenant from the ranks of Sergeant. So I want to introduce him to everybody.
Nice job, nice job. Next up, we have, on presentations, we have an update regarding the Penn Central. I believe Dave Gebner is gonna start us out with that. I see a few of you other folks there. Please introduce yourself.
For those of you who I don't know, I'm David Gebner. I'm an active Richfield citizen involved in the Penn Central neighborhood. Here are my co-conspirators, Gordon Hanson and, you can introduce yourself. Steve was kinda concerned at giving me the mic this evening. I told him I was gonna have a dog and pony show. I had Wolf Central lined up with a dog and couldn't find the pony. You know, the police people are still here because of Steve's concern, I'm sure. So, on that basis, Gordon is gonna run the screen. We have a full-blown multimedia production for you. We're pleased and happy to be able to make this presentation. You know, normally you hear from your commissions, we're not a real commission. We've made a presentation actually once before, before your predecessors, one of which labeled us vigilantes. I was kinda proud of that, but, you know, government has its place and bureaucracy is something that we all have to overcome. The Penn Central got its origin back in 2007, and we have a way of depicting that on the screen. As part of that, you know, it was because of a revitalization study that the city founded, and it was one of several revitalizations or studies that had been done of that area. And the challenge, at least in my mind, was that a number of the businesspeople and citizens in the community said another study. Nothing happened from the previous ones, so I and I think my associates thought that this was something that we wanted to make happen, and we worked hard at it. We developed some Thursday meetings and involved the community. We were a group of residents, businesspeople, property owners, we had some staff and government officials. We wanted to know the individual behind the storefronts, we wanted to communicate the area happenings, and we wanted to, you know, effect a positive revitalization of our area. It was a daunting task. You know, we were hit by the recession, which didn't help any. And initially, I was gonna come here and lament the frustrations that we had and the disappointments that we experienced. But I walked up and down the avenue and looked at it and came to a totally different conclusion that things have happened, they've happened slower than we intended. And Gordon has some slides and some descriptions that he's gonna provide to show you some of the things that happened to give you a little bit of background, and he has the mic.
Well, one of the things we always like to do is we like to welcome new businesses that come to the Avenue, and there's been a number of new businesses over the course of the past number of years. Ada, the restaurant at the old Taco Bell site is an example. I know Wolf Central that took over the old furniture building site is another example. So there's been a number of new entrants. And what we really like is we like when it's kind of, you know, independent businesses with their own unique character and identity, like Ada, that come to the neighborhood. We also encourage investment in the community by the businesses that are on hand. You know, a great example of that is Fireside Pizza, which we just watched this past summer transform from the old site into their new modern site that they have with the Fireside Foundry now. We also actually have worked to attract new businesses to the Avenue. The Ralph Shoe Store that's now on Penn Avenue, when the news broke a number of years ago that they were gonna be evicted from Southdale because they lost their lease, we actually approached them and asked if they would be interested in coming to the Penn Central area with the idea that it was a great spot for small independent businesses like Ralph Shoe Store. We're dedicated to a stronger community, and so while we do support businesses in the Avenue, the Penn Central movement really is a greater effort than that. We're also, we consider this to be a community-based effort where we reach out to the neighbors to build a stronger sense of community.
We haven't practiced to the extent that we should have. We, you know, we wanted to foster a area identity, we wanted to boost community spirit, and to that end, Tom came up with the idea of having an annual celebration. And all of you know and have enjoyed the Pennfest, which dates back seven years, and, you know, that further was enhanced by incorporating the, and popularizing the open streets aspect of it. So, good things are happening in the Avenue, and Gordy will tell you and show you some more pictures of the good things that happened at Pennfest.
Well, I think the great thing about Pennfest, first and foremost, is it brings people together. We've been attracting, with the open street format, we've been attracting an audience of about 5,000 to 7,000 people, according to estimates by our Public Safety Department. So we've been bringing lots and lots of people out of the Avenue for an afternoon of, you know, fun and fun activities and all sorts of ways to get together with their fellow neighbors. You know, we try to create a fun day with a really eclectic mix of activities. We get a lot of the businesses to support the effort on the Avenue, but we also invite in community organizations to do a wide variety of things. And I think the great thing about Pennfest is I've always kind of, and I know Pat, who's not here tonight, has made the same reference, that we almost think of it kinda like the State Fair, and it's an event that appeals to all ages. I know on the day of Pennfest, you'll see everybody out there from school kids to young families pushing strollers, to middle-aged folks right up to senior citizens. So we try to program activities for all ages to make it truly a community-wide event. We also try to partner with community projects. We've partnered with the Back to School 5K Fund Run, which is a fundraiser for the PTOs of our elementary schools, as well as the Honoring All Veterans Memorial Group, and those are just two examples. We try to make the event open to all community organizations so they can come out to the Avenue, meet the public, and help build those bridges.
Tom wants to say a couple things.
Sure. Well, I don't wanna, you know, wear you out. One of the things to say about our involvement with community groups in particular is that we make a specific effort to make it free for any community group, nonprofit group. They can come and set up an information booth and engage with the public. The only catch is, they have to come with an activity. They can't come and just stand there. They have to engage the public in an activity that the public can do. Most of them default and do kids, but we've been very much encouraging them to come in and do things with adults. Our Arts Commission came in one year with the Potter's Wheels, and I will never forget Nancy Rowley sitting down to do a potter, a pot. So, that is one thing we, and we get community groups from all over, not just Richfield. We get a lot coming in from Minneapolis. So long as they do the activity, they can be there. So, that's one of the things that we do to boost the community involved.
We talked before about the Thursday meetings. We had Thursday meetings as a way of getting the businesses and the folks in the neighborhood together. We even had some famous people who came to grace our meetings and add credibility to what we were doing. Gordon came up with a great idea. We had some empty storefronts. We called the event Avenue of Opportunities. We had a day where we had the realtors in the area promote the empty storefronts that were on Penn Avenue, and it was something that had some success, and it was just another one of those things that we did to try to make our neighborhood vital. If you want to talk about this.
Well, we always advocate for continued enhancements in the Penn Avenue area, and we like to recognize those for people who contribute to that. You know, we're certainly always supporters of adding more color to the Avenue. I know there's been planters in front of Hub Hobby and Value Village with plantings in it. One of our kind of, our all-stars is O'Neill Dental, which, a couple of the photographs here show the amazing plantings that they do. And flowers, of course, which bring color in the summers are such a great way to help dress up the Avenue that we certainly appreciate the effort of our businesses on the Avenue. Also, you know, we're advocates for pedestrian safety and more trees on the Avenue. Right in front of the CVS store, we appreciate how the sidewalk is widened in that area with the new retaining wall and the planting of trees and shrubs that help add additional greenery. So we know that's one comment that's been made about the Penn Avenue area, that a lot of times it's lacking greenery, so our efforts are to advocate for moving for more greenery in the Avenue. We'd certainly like to thank the city for working with us. City Richfield's been a great partner in working with us to enhance the Penn Avenue area. The newly remodeled fire station, of course, is a great example of that. Also, talk about landscaping, I know in front of the liquor store and the fire station, there's been new plantings made which help, you know, really dress up the appearance of our neighborhood.
Recently, there was the installation of new pedestrian-level lighting in the Avenue, which adds a whole new feature to the night experience, something that we, you know, appreciate the city doing and would like to see continued. As part of the new pedestrian-level lighting, it'll necessitate new banners and what we would like to see on those banners is a banner design that we have a preference for, and hopefully it'll be looked favorably by the decision-makers as well as us. We have a great future, things are looking good. We have developed a website and a Facebook page which further gives us an identity and a presence. We want to thank the council for allowing us to make this presentation. We believe we're worthy of your support. You know, despite all the efforts that we've done that have come slowly and only incrementally, we believe a complete street reconstruction will spur development and make things happen the way we'd like to see them, so that as political people, we're hopeful that you can lean on the right folks to make that happen on Penn Avenue.
One other thing, I got out of sync just a bit, and I neglected to mention this. Open streets at Pennfest would not happen without the unique cooperation that we have with the Recreation Department, particularly Jim Toppetoffer and Ann Yendra, two of the most spectacular employees that the city of Richfield has. We have forged a partnership with them that I, having worked on a number of events within the city, the partnership that we have with them, I truly think is unique and could be a model for other groups. We truly work as partners, giving up tasks and efforts, and I cannot emphasize how important they have been to making that event a success. And also, you know, the fact that they are city employees, for me, when somebody makes a comment that the city doesn't do anything, it's like, yes, they do, and I can give you two shining examples. So, I did not mean to sidestep them. They are integral to our success.
Thank you for allowing us to do this.
Thanks. You know, I want to thank you for coming. You know, as we were looking at the, you know, we had an October kind of an event and everything, every year. And this really is, as we went through study sessions and after you folks came together and pulled together the Penn Central Open Streets event, this took place and changed the whole dynamic of how we decided to have community celebrations. And you started something really, really cool and trendy, and a lot of other communities are now doing the same thing that we're doing here, and it was the brainchild of a couple of really innovative guys standing right here before me. And that means a lot to us, too, because we get a lot out of that as a community, because you're right, it's not just the people in Richfield, there are people all over coming to that event. We attract from all over the metro area to come to that. It's phenomenal.
Gordon's been very successful in contacting news, particularly Star Tribune. We've gotten some really good space in that paper for that event, but also for the rich field. And again, I think importantly, positive stories about it. It does get noticed.
Well, there's no denying that you've had a lot of impact on what's going on in that. And if your efforts keep going, I think we will see that reconstruction of that road eventually. We keep pushing the county to move everything up, so we're working on it, just to let you know. I think it will bring more development here, I really do.
Thank you for your support.
Thank you for what you do for your community, appreciate it. The next item we have is Hats Off to Hometown Hits, and I told Councilmember Garcia she could start us off tonight.
Okay. Well, I searched every paper and website that I could to find, you know, so I have my usual long list, but behold, it was not to be happening. But what I do want to say is that Tuesday, a week from today, we have precinct caucus. And whether you're a Republican, or a Democrat, or an Independent, you know, please attend your precinct caucus. You know, the presidency is the highest office of the land, and we want to make sure that we participate. And tomorrow, they will be called precinct caucuses and they will be reported on cable and regular TV. So, this is your time to decide who will make it to the nomination for the parties involved. So, if you don't, you can call the League of Women Voters, you can call City Hall, you can look at it in the internet. If you don't know your precinct site, but it starts next Tuesday, 7:00 PM, so please attend.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Howard?
I just had one item. I want to just comment on just a very exciting event that was here at City Hall a few weeks back, a naturalization ceremony. As I understand, the first one we've had in Richfield, we had it at City Hall, and 36 new Americans took their oath of allegiance from, I think, 18 different countries, and they read off each of the countries, and it was just exciting to meet people from around the globe. And, you know, we had the chance to sort of sit up and see just a lot of smiling faces, and it was just such a great welcoming kind of event for folks, and just made you feel just so much pride in Richfield and our country. And Judge Donovan Frank was just wonderful and administered the oath and gave some welcoming remarks. And what he said that just really struck a chord with me is that, you know, right after everyone gave their oath, you know, he said that our country is stronger now than it was five minutes ago. And I think that's very true. And our city's stronger, and it was just a great experience for the city, and I hope we can do it again. And I just want to specifically thank our Human Rights Commission, which had the idea, and Mark Westergaard, our chair, specifically to kind of spearhead this effort, and it was a wonderful event, and I hope it can be something we do again here in Richfield.
Okay. Councilmember Fitz Henry? I know you've got a lot on there.
I don't have to sign in on this one, though, that's good. What I want to present is, we had our, what we call Knock Off Meeting, and what it is is the knock communities that are cities decided to meet on the months that we don't meet for the Noise Oversight Committee. And what it does is it gets us together and kind of find out what issues we have between the cities. It's very difficult during a knock meeting to get things out there and find out what are the real issues. So, we kind of have an informal meeting, and this time was at Pato's. And I will say that Councilmember Quincy did buy lunch, so we thank her for that. We had Minneapolis there, Amber Grove Heights, St. Louis Park, Bloomington, and of course, Richfield. I don't think I forgot anything. And Pam Demetronko from our department attended, too. And what the topics came up was kind of issues we are concerned about, we want to maybe bring to light with the formal knock meetings. None of us were happy with the new measuring software, we talked about that before. MAC's still having issues with it working the same as the old software in the way that it reports different lobes and stuff as far as the noise is, and we're not confident it's reporting correctly. It does have some enhancements that we'd like to see, but until they can get their act together. What happens is, it separates blocks different than the old software, so you get, does it include a whole block? We don't know, sometimes a half-block. So it acts different than the other software, and we want to make sure that before we decide to jump on the bandwagon and accept it, all the consent decree cities, that we make sure this is working. So, we're gonna let MAC know that. And then, something that's really hitting the news lately that I reported a long time ago, is the FAA privatization bill that's on there. It's really hitting a lot of nerves with the cities, I should say. What they want to do is actually turn it into a private ATC organization and base it on users' fees. And so, that kind of threw a flag up for some of the cities, and what they would do is based on the user's fees, then they would use that to fund this, and they will have a private organization with a private CEO with people on the board. When you look at the makeup of the board, it's air carriers, it's ATC, there wasn't really elected officials on it. So, our concern was, who's gonna have a better voice now? With the user fees and the air carriers paying most of the, I guess, bill, who's gonna really have the better voice? The cities and that? The FAA has really been our friend, at least at Minneapolis-St. Paul, and we're not sure. So what we're gonna ask, we're gonna ask the MAC to have a presentation for us. That's what we want to come up with, and we're gonna ask them to give us their opinion on what it's gonna do for them, too, because they also get fees, the federal government for, you know, ATC facilities and airports and that. How would it affect their fees, and will it affect ticket prices? There's a lot of ifs in this that we're not sure of. And so, I know it's gone through the House Transportation and it's going forward, so some cities, I did put a couple of examples on DIAZER that they've actually written, Minneapolis has gone forward and written a letter to their elected officials, Ellenson and others, about that they're not in favor of the privatization of the FAA or the ATC part. There's other cities that appear to be jumping on the bandwagon, and then there's also another issue that came up. Both Edina and Sunfish Lake have written letters that they're gonna deliver to the FAA about the 65 decibels noise zone and that, that they're gonna give to the FAA about that they want the FAA to look at reducing noise. And so, maybe when you go to the conference in DC, you'll be aware of this at the FAA meeting to see what's going on.
I'll go.
I'm not recommending that we do anything yet, because I'm not, first of all, the one about the 65 decibels and all that, I think we're represented by the knock, and the ones you see that are putting this out are the people that feel they're underrepresented, St. Louis Park and Edina, who are in the other groups. So I wouldn't recommend that we do anything yet, because the knock, that's their purpose, to do that. And I kind of get the feeling that some of the knock members are saying, well, why are they going outside the organization? We've had that trouble before, so I don't want to let anybody think that Richfield's going outside, that, you know, we're part of it, we're gonna stick with it.
It'd be nice to talk to some of our folks in Washington DC and see how they feel about this privatization, and I could learn a lot more from them, what the pluses and minuses are, and I can bring, I'll find out if I can get ahold of them, I don't know when they're meeting. Hopefully, I can scoot into that meeting and then find out, and maybe they'll talk about that. I'll find out if they're talking about it. I'll go call ahead.
Now, will you be attending the noise meeting, or not? As I was gonna say, suggest, maybe if you weren't, I'd even think about running out there, yeah, just for that.
Let me look at the time, and if it crosses over on something else, because I got a couple of other duties being with the board, I'm on the Minnesota League, I'll let you know. Maybe you can pop out there if I need you, I'll let you know.
I think that's gonna be important with this privatization.
I do, too. That's why I said, I think we have to join again.
Yeah, and I'm really not confident that the new Next Gen will move forward. That's the big issue, too, is what happens when they privatize this? Will Next Gen move forward? Who's gonna do it? It's a lot of ifs, and it's happening at a time, Canada has done this, okay, and they privatized it, I think it was 1996, and they've done it with some success. success. I'm not really sure.
Be interested to find out what's not working over there.
Yeah. Yeah. And it's a whole different organization than we're used to. A lot of other countries, you know, have a different way of running things than we do. We have a lot bigger country, and part of the FAA is our national security, so I'm really worried. If everybody remembers during nine eleven, they grounded every aircraft. They actually federalized ATC, and they became part of the military to guard our country, and I'm not sure what would happen during that. Also, Minneapolis is putting support in for Delta on the Japanese flight that...
Oh, yes. I've been reading about that.
And they're real concerned with that, and I don't know if we want to...
I am, too. I would be in support of asking Delta to keep that.
Yeah, because it does mean a lot to our economy, and then maybe we can make a decision whether we want to, you know, support...
And China, and going to Asia and stuff, one of the things that is really difficult is our language, and it's really much easier for them if they have a direct flight. So, losing direct flights is a really big deal. Really big deal.
Yeah, that's a big concern for a lot of businesses in here. And then, we talked about the rules for knock and the bylaws and that. And one interesting thing came up, and it's going to come up at the end of my term, too, is who's going to be on the knock? Now, some cities have decided, actually, member Quincy from Minneapolis, he is now on another committee that he can't attend the knock meetings. And what we're seeing in the knock is that we're getting more city experts going to the meeting, because the learning curve, unless, you know, I was lucky, I'm a pilot and former air traffic controller, so I understood what they're talking about still, once in a while, you know, threw me for. But to somebody to come in and get to that level, it's a good three- or four-year process to even understand that. So, cities are doing is having a city staff member, or a representative of the city, be there constantly through that. Pam's been there. We've had other members. And I would suggest, not no disrespect to Howard, but that we think about, still, we'll still have an elected official, because it has to be there, but we may have somebody like Pam, or somebody in our city, to keep track of that. Because it is a day-to-day thing, I'm on the Internet daily, watching what's going on with RNAV and...
You've got to watch it, like a hawk.
And that's how I catch things. And that's a lot of time. And I'm not even sure our staff wants to bite that off, but I think they're better suited to handle that. So, I would maybe suggest that we look at that, still have him as a representative, but the person that may speak, maybe Pam or somebody else. Just throwing it out there. Because, like I said, it is a little difficult. I'm trying to think, yeah, well, some examples I have is Egan uses their city administrator versus an elected official. And the elected officials choose to let the city staff to go there, because they're, you know, better first in what's happening and that.
Sometimes it's timing, too. I mean, a lot of these are through the day when people work, and...
Well, that's the other thing. The knock meeting ends up being at, you know, one o'clock on a Wednesday, and I know people that have real jobs always can't show up. And we've always asked, too, about the knock, if they couldn't change them, but...
Well, yeah, why wouldn't they make it for public?
Well, what happens is, we've got a lot of, the other half is Delta and all the other, and they're, they got to fly in from different parts of the country, sometimes, you know, from, and so, it seems to work to get most of the people there at that time.
Oh, really? Okay.
So, you know, but I'd have asked for their public input meetings not to be on Tuesdays. So, now they're switching them, so. That's kind of it in a nutshell, and I've also volunteered, we had a co-chair that had to leave for personal reasons, and it looks like I'll have backing to be a co-chair for the knock this year until my terms end. So, I thought I'd warn you guys and ask if I have your permission to do that, so.
I'll make the motion.
Second?
Call in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. That's all I have, unless you have questions.
Well, I wanted to ask, excuse me, I know that Jeff Hamel is going to be leaving in a year. What kind of process are they going to use?
We're hoping to find out soon. We don't know if it's an internal candidate, what exactly is going on. We know he's leaving.
Well, he's been there a hundred years.
Yeah. And I don't know if Steve's heard any word through the, we haven't heard anything yet. I'm sure it'll be announced, how they're going to do it. My thoughts are, they probably will seek outside versus internal, but that's what we've heard through the grapevine, but there are good internal candidates, too. You know, MAC's got a bunch of really nice people, and they know what they're doing. I mean, I'm very impressed with their staff. We've had no issues with them, and they've been real good to support the cities. We ask them a question, we get the answer right away.
Good.
And some of the reports we're getting now are, you should go on the site, we're getting reports we never got before. We can tell the reason that planes are going to the north all the time is because of the weather, and they bring up a wind rose showing all that. So, it's not just, we think the, you know, FAA's doing that because they get more airplanes out, it's really dependent on the wind. And we can prove it through all the different graphs and that, that MAC has come up with to prove. They're light-years ahead of most airports.
That's great to hear.
Yeah.
It's nice to hear.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for, very insightful. I have just a couple of discussion points that I wanted to bring up. One was, Councilmember Fitz Henry and I are frequent the American Legion's omelet feed on the third Sunday. I see your husband there, too, sometimes, Councilmember Garcia. Wonderful, wonderful event. We love, we so really love that, and we love the fact that all that money goes back to help our veterans. But we were both approached and talked to by the ladies auxiliary, who would like to have a meat raffle, but because they also pull tabs there, they're not allowed to do that. They're allowed to have one, but the Lions run their pull tabs now. And they were wondering if there was some kind of, because this is just like, and again, all the money for the meat raffle is supposed to go to charity. Is there something we could do to look at that, and possibly revisit some of that? Kind of like the signs for loaves and fishes. I mean, this is going right back in our community. It'd be nice if we could find a way to make this happen for them.
Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, I'm not sure if that's a local regulation or if we're dealing with state. Maybe if I could get, like, after the meeting, just give me the details in an email or something, or however you want to do it. We'll look at it, and we'll see what we can do.
And maybe if it's separate enough, because the Lions are doing their, I don't know.
Maybe.
Maybe you could help them out. That'd be great.
We'll certainly look at it.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate it. The other thing is, is I know that, been going around, I follow the communications on Facebook a lot, about Champs not getting their lease renewed. And I was wondering if city staff would reach out and find out if Champs was going to relocate back in city, in the city somewhere. And perhaps, that's Mr. Stark's kind of line, but I know this is just very recent that this has happened. Perhaps, maybe, do you have more information than that? I, that's all the information I have. I haven't had a chance to get over there and talk to them, either.
Madam Mayor and Councilmembers, I do not have much more information than that. I do know that, you know, Champs as a corporation has gone through bankruptcy. Most of their restaurants either closed, or went into independent ownership, where they may have kept the Champs name in some way, but it's not a Champs franchise. But we will talk to the Champs management and see what their plans are.
See if we can help them out at all. You know, that's very unfortunate, I don't know about you, but they have some of the best wings in town. My husband and I love to go there, and their burgers are phenomenal. And this is due to the fact that Village Shores wants to expand, and they want to have memory care units in their facility here. And I know I've heard some conversations about all the memory care. Actually, Richfield does have memory care units, but in each one of the senior dwellings, they're not full entirely memory care units. There are other senior living arrangements as well, and there's a very small portion of those particular types of residents that are memory care. They can't have a large amount. And what they're doing is, was well within their rights to do, and we have no way to stop it. I know I've had a constituent from Village Shores very concerned. They are refurbishing the apartments in there, too, and we're seeing some rehab happening here in Richfield. There's the pluses and minuses. Those people will have to switch apartments, but they will get to stay there. But they're refurbishing the entire inside of that, and they're going to be doing some pretty big construction over there. And the dining room will actually now be where the Champs is now. So, that's one of the things that is going on. But, you know, and people are concerned that, you know, we're getting too much senior and everything. There are certain places where senior housing actually is very appropriate, like St. Richard's parking lot. We wouldn't want market rate there, because we wouldn't be able to handle the traffic or the parking or other things. So, that's quite a problem. So, sometimes we make decisions up here because of that. But we do have market rate building coming. We have townhomes coming over on the east side, and I'm really excited about that, on Cedar Point, too, and apartments, both north and south, two very nice apartment complexes coming in, and they'll have twenty percent affordable in them. So, we have a mix of what's coming into the town, and it's not all going to be memory care units, but there is going to be some senior dwellings. And quite frankly, we need to do the garage site. We owe ourselves the money back to pay back the debt that we have on the Public Works building. We always were going to, and as much as we've tried to get townhouses or something in there, it's not financially feasible, and we have tried every way we can, and we've held that property open for a very long time. So, I'm very happy with what we've decided to move forward with, and I just wanted to make those comments regarding that. Any other comments? Approval of the agenda as it stands?
So, move. Second?
All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Vote. Motion carries. We have the consent calendar.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. For those at home, those in the audience, the consent calendar contains sometimes several separate items, tonight only two, which are acted upon by the City Council in one motion. And once the consent calendar has been approved, the individual items and the recommended actions will also have been approved, and no further action on these items is necessary. Item A of consent calendar is consideration of the approval of the second reading of amendments to the city zoning ordinance, and a resolution authorizing the summary publication of the ordinance. This proposed ordinance would update daycare facility allowances in all residential districts so that Richfield's regulations are in conformance with those of the state. And item B is consideration of the approval of the second reading of an ordinance authorizing the conveyance of property owned by the city of Richfield to the Housing and Redevelopment Authority. And this is just one small strip of property and one individual lot that was left off from the main transfer of those properties that took place a couple months ago. And that's the consent calendar.
I'll move the calendar.
Second?
All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Item seven is a public hearing and consideration of a resolution specifying the use of funds from the Community Development Block Grant allocation for 2016, and authorizing execution of a sub-recipient agreement with Hennepin County and any required third-party agreements. Hennepin County is annually awarded federal community development block grant dollars, and this is funding on a formula basis from the Department of Housing and Urban Development. The county, in turn, allocates a portion of those funds to the city of Richfield to address local needs relating to affordable housing, community development, and public services. A minimum of seventy percent of the funds are required to be used for activities benefiting very low and low-income persons, and a maximum of fifteen percent can be used to fund public services. So, the staff is proposing the following, to use the city's 2016 allocation of two-hundred-and-forty-thousand-five-hundred-and-eighty-four estimated dollars as follows. Single-family scattered site, new construction, a hundred-and-fifteen thousand dollars. Single-family acquisition and rehabilitation, eighty thousand dollars. Deferred loan rehabilitation program, eighteen thousand eighty-four dollars. For public services, household outside maintenance for the elderly, twenty thousand dollars. Home line tenant hotline, four thousand dollars. Community action partnership for suburban Hennepin County, four thousand five hundred. So, does the staff have anything else to add? At this time, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to come forward to comment? Please come up and state your name, approximately three minutes.
My name's Bill O'Meara. I'm a housing rehab specialist with Community Action Partnership of Suburban Hennepin. Mayor Godal, nice to see you, council, and somebody who used to be on our board. We want to thank you for the longstanding partnership we've had with you. We were founded in nineteen eighty-five, serving communities in suburban Hennepin to provide wraparound services. Last year in suburban Hennepin, we worked with thirty-four thousand, over thirty-four thousand households of low income and eighty-one thousand individuals. We're requesting the forty-five hundred dollars to continue funding our asset building and maintenance programs that bring together a holistic approach to improving the financial stability of low and moderate income households in Richfield by providing counseling, education, and savings services. We're expanding programs to include the reintroduction of the FAME program, the Family Assets for Independence, where their savings are matched three to one, and that can be applied for continuing education, buying a home, or starting a business. Last year, we had counseled sixteen residents in households, homebuyer counseling or rehab services. Pre-purchase, we had five people. We had some reverse mortgage people that we worked with, and we had a post-purchase refi, which is a federal regulation, if somebody's going to refi a particular loan, that they have to get counseling, so that we can avoid some of those issues we've had in the past. We look to do more. We had seven folks who attended the Homestretch Workshop. We also gave the workshop here twice, and we also sponsored a energy-saving seminar here that we got to use. We've seen the shift from foreclosure prevention to homebuyer services. We're expanding our awareness of our services through Minnesota Housing and the Minnesota Home Ownership Center. We also do our volunteer lawyer network. We did provide free legal services to twenty-eight Richfield residences, including twenty undocumented Richfield Latino youth who applied for and received the deferred action for immigration proceedings, and that's renewable every two years. Certainly on behalf of cash, we appreciate your supporting us, and I'm certainly available for any questions.
Thanks. It's nice that you came.
Bill, I wanted to ask, now, they closed cash, Community Action Minneapolis, so it was absorbed by your Community Action, right?
That hasn't been made official yet. We've been given the nod, a judge has to approve that.
Okay.
That's a fluid situation.
And if that happens, are you going to have to move to a different venue?
No.
No? Okay.
We absorbed that, the Department of Commerce asked us to execute the Energy Assistance Program, which we did. And we've had some new people come into our cap agency, and they've done a spectacular job. And so, I think that's what started that. And we have some sites already in Minneapolis, so we're staying in St. Louis for now.
I know you run a tight ship. Too bad Minneapolis couldn't.
Yeah. You guys do well.
Well, we're very proud of that.
Yes. You should be. Good job.
Thank you. Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing. Would anyone else like to come forward to speak?
My name is Matt Eichenlob. I'm one of the attorneys at Home Line. To start, I'd like to say thank you for including us in the report, in the ordinance, in the budget. Your support means a lot to us. It's something we appreciate, that you appreciate the work that we do, and we'd like to be able to tell other cities, look, Richfield supports us, New Hope supports us, a lot of other cities support us, and they find our service to be valuable. So, thank you for your support in that fashion. Over the prior year, we talked to about two-hundred-eleven residential households in Richfield. That works out to be about five-hundred-twenty-eight residents. Most of the calls were the type of calls you could imagine landlords and tenants would disagree about, evictions, security deposits, repairs, notices to vacate, late fees, those types of things. The biggest trend recently has been really the decline in foreclosure calls. Four years ago, foreclosure calls would have been in the top five calls that we've received from tenants. Now, it's back to almost what it was before two thousand and eight. That's good, I think. But that's what we've been up to, and that's, so thank you again for your support.
Thanks. This is a public hearing. Would anyone else like to come forward to speak?
Mayor and councilmembers, my name is John Burkow, and I'm the director of the home program, and we are part of Senior Community Services. And I just wanted to give you some updates on the changes that I've seen lately. Some programs like ours that provide the needed home maintenance, mowing, shoveling, painting, and homemaking have actually stopped serving seniors in the past few years. A few examples of this are Handy Works and Neighborhood Involvement Program. Involvement Program in Minneapolis, Merrick Community Services in St. Paul, the city of Fridley, the SEEP program in Brooklyn Park, Brooklyn Center, and Oseo. Contrary to that, since 1990, we have actually expanded our program eight times, and four of those times have been since 2014. We actually took over a couple of the programs that I previously mentioned. One of the reasons that we have survived and actually expanded over the last 26 years is our diversified funding stream and support from the local cities that we serve, like Richfield, has really provided us with a solid foundation. I want to thank you very much for your financial support, and also for the other ways that you partner with us to let residents here in Richfield know about the services we offer. I was actually, just by coincidence, over today at the Richfield Community Center, they have a fair-for-all event.
Yep.
And I thought, what a great chance for us to pass out literature about our program. And there was probably 75 people, at least, in attendance, and we passed out a lot of information about our program. So, it's the first time I've done that, and I told them I'd probably be back in a few months to pass out information again. The other thing that, as you're probably well aware, is just the huge demographic shift that's taking place. About 10,000 people in our country turn 65 every day, and they predict that this trend will continue for the next 14 years. So, there will be more and more seniors. According to the census data, in 2010, there were about 6,800 seniors here in Richfield. That was about 20% of the population. So, I'm quite confident that the demand that we, for the services we provide to seniors, will only continue to grow in the years ahead. I just wanted to share a final note from one of our participants. I always like to add a personal touch to the numbers that we present when we do our application. And her name is Gertrude. She's actually turning 90 this year. She has been with our program since 2003, and she says that she would not have been able to stay in her home if it had not been for our help. She's had the same raking group, too, for a number of years, and they actually always request her every fall. That's a little bit unusual, but we're very happy that she's developed that relationship with a group that comes to her home. And I would like to quote Gertrude, if I may. She says, "I have been lucky all along with home, and I adore Marge, my homemaker. She does all the things that I cannot do. She vacuums, washes the floors, cleans the bathrooms, and changes my bedding. She is so thorough and treats me like a member of her family. Thank you for helping all the people in Richfield and the work that you do." And that was one of the things when I talked with several of our homemakers this past year, and they commented to me, how about, they do actually become part of the family. Marge has been with Gertrude, I think, since about 2007. And so, they visit him twice a month, and they really get to know the clients very well. Our job really is to help clients take care of their home, help them maintain their home, but it's really serving the clients, connecting them with them personally, and the relationships that we form with them that is really at the heart of what we do. And I just want to thank you again for the opportunity to speak with you tonight, and I would be happy to answer any questions you might have.
I know several seniors who use Home Line, and they've been very happy, too, and very pleased with your services. Thank you for what you do in our community. I appreciate it.
Good. I'm always happy to get positive feedback.
Yeah, so am I.
Thank you.
So, the public hearing continues. Is there anyone else who would like to come forward? Anyone else at all? This is a public hearing.
I am moved to close. Second?
All those in favor closing the public hearing? Answer by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Aye. Public hearing has been closed. At this time, then, I'd approve the resolution authorizing the use of funds for the 2016 Urban Hennepin County Community Development Block Grant Program and authorizing execution of a sub-recipient agreement with Hennepin County and any required third-party agreements.
So moved. Second?
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Councilmember Fitz Henry, I believe you have the next item.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The item that's up for consideration is the capital improvements to the municipal liquor store located at 6,600 Cedar Avenue South. As you know, at the January 26, 2016 City Council meeting, the City Council deferred action on the renovation of the Cedar Avenue Liquor Store and asked staff to investigate the possibility of acquiring the building and lot immediately to the west of the liquor store, known as Lakeside Counseling Site, with the idea of either using that existing building for the store or demolishing both the liquor store and the adjacent building to allow the construction of a new, larger Cedar Avenue store. Excuse me. Staff was then to compare the feasibility of such a course of action in comparison to putting funding into renovating the existing liquor store. I want to, first of all, thank staff for all the trouble you went through that I caused, but, and also the city manager. We really looked at this, and we had questions on it, but I'm glad we did. The new analysis, it brought light to what other problems we have in the other liquor stores. I would read all this other stuff, but we already know what it is. But, what I really want to say is I'm glad we went through this because I was getting the questions from other people. Why are we redoing a 30-year-old building? And then, when I sat down with Steve, and he explained what we have to do to keep the other liquor stores running, it brought a light, and I think the council needs to be aware of that, too. We still have a Penn Liquor Store that we'd like to move someday. I know your wine and spirits, you're looking at, we have to do some fixing there, and some other items. So, after looking at all the matrices that you presented, it made sense to go ahead with renovation. And what I did appreciate is that staff even took the time to say that, once we do this, we can actually still expand the Cedar Liquor Store, because you came up with a new plan of looking at moving the parking lot out and talking with MinDOT and using that for parking and that. So, if nothing else, it brought to light a lot of new options that we didn't think about. The new construction of the store would have cost about $2.5 million, and if you had acquired the building to the west, it was another million. So, it was a $3 million total that we would have had to put into it. And I appreciate how conservative the city actually is in looking at these options and thinking of the other stores that we have to go through. So, unless, do you want to make any comments, Mr. Fillmore, who's our liquor director, on what your thoughts are on this, before I go ahead and make the motion?
Sure. A lot of the concerns that the council had early on were a lot of the things that we looked at a long time ago. The only deficiency of that store was what you brought up, the parking. And Public Works has gone to work, and I think it'll be a much more fluid traffic through there, eliminating some of the parking spaces that are on the north end of the building there. That seems to be a kind of a safety concern. But, if we can acquire more land for the parking area, I think we're doing well. And Mike classes here to show some of the prototypes that he has.
I think we'd like to see that.
Can I ask a question? How we found out who all owns that property on that vacated road or anything? I know city manager and I went out and visited that.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Yes. It may not be that that's an issue.
Oh, okay.
There's other ways of doing it.
Acquiring things.
Or maybe not acquiring it, but making use of it for parking.
Oh, thank you. Okay. Appreciate that.
Great. Madam Mayor, members of the council, thank you once again. I appreciate having the opportunity to be in front of you again for another project with the city. I think, going to do a very short PowerPoint presentation. Get that, there we go. And really, I met with the liquor store staff, Mr. Fillmore, other members of the city, trying to talk about the goals for this project. They included, again, kind of the similar updates that we did to the store on 64th and Lyndale, interior image upgrades, and then some minor exterior upgrades. But, one of the, a couple of the primary items that we were looking at is ways to expand the existing cooler area. Again, some of the comments made from the last council meeting where this was, where this came up, was how do we get more frontage to be able to present some of the craft beers and that kind of thing? So, that was a direction that we were kind of looking at. So, some of the obvious things are just simply getting more cooler space or more door space and that kind of thing. So, those were kind of the primary things. Again, other things were just giving the interior a facelift, again, much like the other store that we worked on, removing the drop ceiling, changing out the floors, new shelving systems, again, adding some new graphics, graphics, and then actual signage for the products. The outside, again, a little more minor, but we have a couple of ideas on things that I think will give that a little bit of a facelift as well. Couple of pictures here, just the existing store and kind of what it looks like. And, again, it certainly has a somewhat dated look at this point. The existing store, again, I bring up this slide just to kind of give you an idea, the way you basically come into the store, circle around, the cooling area, or the cooler area has X amount of doors that are there. And really, the only way to expand that would be to start to move things like the toilet area and the break area. So, those are the things that we looked at. This is essentially the new plan. So, we basically relocated the office areas and the toilet areas over to the far corner, and then that kind of gave us the ability to make the cooler a little bigger. We would come into the building a little different, actually going along where it indicates the walk-off mat.
Yeah.
So, we'd be approaching it, kind of coming in from another direction. Couple of reasons for that. One would be just from a general security standpoint, we're trying to get at the primary checkout, just better visual down the aisles, and also just really kind of a better look, a way to kind of get some of the graphics as part of it so people can see. The shelving that we'd put in would likely be a little bit lower. So, again, we'd see a cross there. Currently, they have kind of various heights, various setups, and they also have kind of a warm beer area that basically almost hides the whole beer cooler area. So, we think this will kind of improve that. As we mentioned, we were able to make the cooler bigger. It currently is about 800 square feet. We're around 1,150. So, it's about a 40% increase just in the cooler space. And I think that'll allow some of the, again, the cases of beer that are out on the floor to be placed into the cooler. Currently, there's about 30 feet, 37 feet of door space. We're up to about 40, or 51. So, that's another increase of about 30%. We would follow a kind of a similar, as I mentioned, a similar look that we have at the store on 64th and Lyndale. Again, we did, we removed the drop ceiling, paint the exposed joists and deck, paint the, we bring in some new ductwork, paint that. We would come up with some similar signage, and then also potentially some graphic, much like we have over at the cooler at the other store. This is a real simple, simple concept rendering that just kind of shows as you'd be entering the store, you can kind of get a sense of your view across the store, again, being able to see over things. And I think from a security standpoint, that makes a lot of sense. From the checkout counter, again, the same thing is true. You'd be able to see kind of across it, plus straight down into the cooler doors. Colors are things that we're still working on with Mr. Fillmore, and we'll present that. But, basically, again, they'll be very similar, the concepts to what we have in the other store. The outside is a little different. We, I think we had a little bit more of a minor budget there, and we were asked to just look at some simple things to be able to do. Right now, the, from my perspective, the glass in some of the areas around that is very dark. The green, the green kind of metal panel, again, has kind of a dated appearance. So, what we're looking at doing is a little bit of a version that, where we do replace the glass and the sliding doors. We come in with more of a clear-anodized aluminum type of look. We do a similar thing with the signage out in front, where we would utilize the new Richfield logo. And then, one other item, the half-round glass that is up on top, in the version, in the existing version, that's actually not really, it's glass, but you can't see through it. So, it's really kind of a fake thing. In the new version, we want to open that up, be able to raise that ceiling. Currently, it's about eight feet. We'd raise that up, get a light fixture in there. And so, certainly in the nighttime, you'd be able to see, I think it would kind of pop a little bit, and I think it'd give a much better, much better presence. So, that's what I have. Is there any questions?
Wow. Really nice.
My question is, if this passes tonight, when are we going to move on it?
Well, we are very close. We just have a few things to finalize, and then we'll be ready to get the documents out, and obviously advertise. And really, I think the biggest trick is just coming up with appropriate time to shut down. If you remember, the last renovation that we did, I think we were closed for about six or seven weeks. And so, we tried to keep it within that same timeframe.
Well, let Bill go ahead, and he's got an idea.
Yes, I think, based on where we are right now, we could quickly get all the specs together, go out for bids, and we could be open by Memorial Day weekend.
Oh, that'd be good.
And, you know, and to look at this is kind of like when we looked at Lyndale, and I think, I'm at that store every day. I can't imagine it's going to look like Lyndale did. And about two weeks before we were done, I thought, this is beyond what I ever thought it would be. So, we clear out everything. I think that that store is really, really going to look nice. It'll be nice and light, especially with that vestibule and the new parking arrangement. I know Steve doesn't like that island in the front. That's going.
No. I agree. Totally.
Okay. Well, I know you're going to be without an office, so we're going to have to put a little A Glue out there for you or something so you can hang out, or? Okay. Any other questions before I make the motion?
Go ahead.
Okay. I'll go ahead and make the motion that we authorize a capital improvement and direct city staff to proceed with the remodeling and upgrade of the municipal liquor store located at 6,600 Cedar Avenue.
A second. Any other conversation?
No, I just wanted to say that, you know, it really makes a lot of sense. And I talked to the city manager, too, and I think it's the right thing to do, because you don't, you know, you've got to repair what's repairable. And with all, everything that's available, you know, in terms of remodeling nowadays, it just, it just will be like a new store. So, I'm very pleased with that.
I'm looking forward to the beer tasting that will start when it opens. I'll be there for the grand opening. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries.
Madam Mayor, could I just add?
Please.
Mike, there's a tasting area in that store that we're going to be setting aside. Isn't that true?
Oh, yeah. Oh, I asked for that specifically. I love that. Oh, that's great.
It'd be similar, well, I think we're kind of finalizing the exact size, but it would be similar to what we have at the other store, as well.
Yeah. So, I really think you're going to really love the way that store is going to turn out. And, you know, kind of following the trend of what we did at 64th and Lyndale, I mean, it really cleans up our act. And, you know, the customers that we have and that we want to keep are the people from the neighborhood, are people who come down from Minneapolis into Richfield. And they may not be going there to get a pickup truck full of liquor, whatever, wine for a big event, but they're going there for the day to get their, the weekend, whatever, and they want to be able to park by the door, walk in, have a nice, clean, open environment with good customer service and reasonable prices, and we'll keep those customers. The one thing that you've got to keep in mind is, and that is, as Councilmember Fitz Henry said, you do have, you do have a situation at Penn. We need to do something with that store, and we'll be thinking about it. But, you know, staff will be coming back to the City Council sometime in the not-too-distant future to talk about what we're going to do with Penn Avenue, that Penn Avenue store. That, you know, that's a profitable store per square foot. But, you know, I just went in there today and looked at it again, and I talked to the manager of there, Bonnie Wold. I've talked to her for quite a while. And, you know, if nothing else, you, you know, the store is, it's kind of small, and I don't know if it lends itself to remodeling or not, but, you know, there are some things you could do with that store that would greatly improve it without maybe pouring that much money into it. Or, maybe we wait for a little while and find another location. But, got to do something there. We just have to. So, thank you.
We're competing with Total Wine and all these other places. We've got to, we've got to be in our A-game.
Yep.
City managers' report?
I guess I really, I brought something. No, I don't, no, nothing, really.
Claims and payroll?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, council. Seeing no further action, I call this meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for coming tonight.